Order the committee of the whole meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call, please.
Ms. Angarola. Ms. Bayless here, Mr. Becker.
Here.
Ms. Houghton. Ms. Caffetti. Here. Ms. Sullivan. Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? If you'd like to make a public comment, please feel free just to stand up. Okay, there being no public comments, we will move on to presentations.
All right, we have three presentations this evening, and our first one, which I think you will all are here for. District 76 uses a balanced assessment system to identify student academic growth and proficiency. One of our assessments that we use is the STAR assessment. And the STAR assessment is a short test given three times a year to give personalized learning data about each student. As a district, one of our goals and priorities this year was to have 100% of our students grow in English Language Arts and Math. You will see, as we present our students, who have shown the most growth in reading and math throughout the district. In this special presentation, we are celebrating students from each of our schools that grew the most in points and in growth percentiles on the STAR assessment from the beginning of the year till this spring. The STAR Spanish Assessment is also given both at Diamond Lake School and West Oak Intermediate School, and the STAR Early Literacy Assessment is only given at Diamond Lake School. So I'm going to ask the principals to please come and help me present our amazing students, the awards. So families, thank you so much for coming. District Leadership Team and Board of Education, please help me congratulate and recognize the following student growth achievement winners. From Diamond Lake, for math, Carter Fox. Nice job, Carter, for reading, Morgan Lang. For early literacy, Benjamin Castro. He's like, I don't want to hug, I'm going, I'm coming right here. For Spanish Early Literacy, we have Emily Ruiz Martinez. And for Spanish Reading, Ariselli Martinez. Well, we will make sure to get this for her. All right, for West Oak Intermediate School, Mr. Prebble. For reading, we have Juan Montalvo Campo. The older they get, as I'm sure you know, they don't want to hug anymore, so I respect that. For math, Lilac Wang. And for Spanish, Emily Cordova. And for West Oak Middle School, we have two students, not in attendance today for math, is El Kim, so we'll make sure we get that over to her. But who is here tonight for reading is Emmanuel Diaz for reading. Can we have all of those? Can we have all of those amazing students come right up here, so Mr. Hanson can take a picture with your principals, please? We are so proud of each and every one of you. That means you guys worked really hard all year to make such growth and improvement. Your teachers are proud of you, your principals are proud of you, I'm proud of you, the board is proud of you, and of course, your families who are here tonight are proud of you. So families and friends who joined us and supported us, thank you so much for coming. You are welcome to stay for the entire meeting, it's really fun and exciting. This was pretty much the highlight to celebrate your beautiful kids. We are going to do a student assessment presentation, and then we're going to recognize our parent-teacher organization. So if you do decide to leave, thank you so much for coming, have a wonderful summer and enjoy your evening. Thank you. For this, sorry, our second presentation for this evening is our District 76 Growth, excuse me, Growth Presentation of our Student Assessments. So what we recognized our students for, you're going to be able to see all the amazing achievements and the assessments that we've done throughout the year. So we're going to follow the same format that we've done, based on the board's feedback, that what's worked for them. So I'm going to hand it over to the District Leadership Team, who has collectively put this presentation together and will share the results district-wide, as well as for each of their schools. So Dr. Cunningham.
Thank you. So we recall back in the fall, we set a goal as a district, as one of our priorities. Our first goal and priority was that we wanted to see 100% growth from fall to spring for all of our students in the district. It was the first time we had approached defining growth in this way versus growth percentiles or things of that nature. And we've kind of been on this journey this year, and we have some pretty exciting data to show you. As well, we've learned a lot about the STAR assessment. We've been using the STAR assessment for a few years now, just before the pandemic till now. We, if you recall in the fall, or it was the winter, I believe, I showed the trip steps and some just different grade levels where some skills become more difficult to attain to move to the next level. We've also learned in that time that STAR actually treats the test as a, the fall test is considered a pre-test. This is the way it's structured in the system. And the winter, after that assessment, if you do particularly well on it, actually, your spring assessment does not look like your winter assessment. And so we'll see a lot of times is that students that do very well in the winter may not grow as much in the spring, or even drop a little bit, because they have a completely new set of standards and skills being measured. However, when you look at their national growth, they're still performing extremely well. We'll have students that actually maybe went up minimally versus the winter and earned the 99th percentile for the amount of growth they showed, to give you an idea. So that's something we've learned this year, as we begin, as we continue to understand this test and what we can do with it. So just a couple of terms to help us as we walk through the assessments today, which we'll be showing you the fall-to-spring growth numbers and where the students fall in the three tiers. The term RTI, Response Intervention. We use three tiers, it's typically an academic term. Tier one, and our district, we define as 30th percentile and above, that is our definition of tier one. Each district can set their own. Tier two is 29th to the 12th percentile, and then tier three is below the 11th percentile. We have different interventions in each building, some of which will be reviewed, and some ways that we're tweaking those for next year. And as I mentioned, we take the STAR assessment three times a year, fall, winter, and spring, and reading and math. And you also saw that we've been using the STAR Spanish Reading for some of our grade levels as well, to measure the progress in the dual program, which Dr. Berger will allude to in a little bit. A couple other terms, just to make sure we're familiar with these, and I believe there's also a presentation that we shared after the winter one with some of these terms. But the STAR is our benchmark assessment. I just talked about the Response Intervention. Really, RTI was a term that was used probably in the early 2000s, and since then, has changed to the multiple tiers of systems and support, which RTI falls under. And when we use that term, we're talking about supporting students academically, social-emotional learning, behavior, and attendance, that's typically all under an umbrella. And so we have interventions that take place in enrichment in all those areas. If we use the term SLA, referring to Spanish Language Arts, that's instruction that's given to our dual-language students in Spanish. If you see something called LLI, that is Level Literacy Intervention, that is our reading intervention program that we use for K through eight students. It's from Fontis and Pennell, the vendor. And then if you see the term, which Dr. Olson has a review of this term actually later on, CBM means Curriculum-Based Measures. Those are very quick assessments, sometimes they can be done in five to 10 minutes. It helps assess where students are in their progress, if they're comprehending what's being taught, retaining it. And then SBRC, that's referred to our Standards-Based Report Cards, using a one to four scale. So with that, I'm going to turn it over first to Dr. Berger.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cunningham. So looking at the English Language Arts assessments that DLS participated in, we always start with the Early Literacy, which is our foundational language skills. Within that, students are assessed based on their knowledge of the alphabet, phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, and comprehension. When students have mastered those standards and are able to go on to take the STAR reading, that's when we're looking at more at the developmental skills and the application. Things along the lines of the author, literary, argument, vocabulary, and a really deep comprehension for the longer paragraphs and stories that children may read within that assessment. So we're going to take a look at kindergarten first, this is kindergarten ELA, and this was actually a test year. In previous years, we had only given the ELA kindergarten test in the spring. We did not assess the students within that three-cycle of benchmarking. This year, we wanted to run it as a pilot and see how much growth our students were making throughout the year, because it was giving us a much better indication of how much support or intervention might have needed to happen within the school year. It also gave us a better indication that when our students were first starting with us coming into kindergarten, if they had attended preschool or not, some of them may have just not been exposed to the information versus children maybe needing a little bit more support in order to master the skill. So we are very proud to say that when we look at the growth in kindergarten in ELA, we saw 100% for Early Literacy. Tier one went from 32 to 52 students, nine to eight in tier two, and tier three went from 22 to six. So we saw significant growth across all three tiers. Kindergarten made adjustments to their lessons throughout the entire school year, and they are very proud to continue with the three-benchmark cycle. So this was our pilot year that gave us the data that we needed to show we will keep going. I'm sorry, can you go back one more time? That's okay. I also just want to highlight, looking at the ELA, we actually had 13 students who tested out of Early Literacy completely, and were able to take that reading assessment, which is a rather advanced skill coming at the end of kindergarten. When we consider what the class size was for this group, it was 68 total students, with 13 of them already in tier one and showing 100% growth, that means about 20% of this class is entering first grade already having complete knowledge of reading and able to comprehend and answer the questions on the assessment and all that kind of good stuff. So it's a very strong academic performing class for ELA. And then when we look at math, we saw 100% growth in kindergarten for math as well. In tier one, going from 46 to 51, tier two, 10 students to 13, and tier three, nine to two students. And again, using this three-benchmark cycle, we were able to get math intervention involved in kindergarten for the first time, so there was much more application of the skills and able to target what students needed help with the most. Looking ahead at first and second grade, we had some students that took the early lit and some students that also moved on to the reading. It was just a matter of mastery of those skills and being able to move on to the harder assessment. We are proud to say that students in first grade who took the early lit assessment showed 100% growth, many of them not only showing growth within that assessment, but able to move on to the reading. So when we look at early lit in the fall, tier one went from 45 to 13, and while that sounds like a decrease in performance, it's actually an improvement, because they had passed that Early Literacy Assessment and went on to the reading. In tier two, we went from 24 to nine, and tier three, 37 to 14. And then students moving into that first-grade reading assessment, we saw 95% growth there, 25 to 58 in tier one, eight to 10 in tier two, and 16 to four in tier three. And when we look at that, we had about 100 students in first grade. So with 95% showing growth in their reading, there's about five students that we needed to take a closer look at. We know for a fact, we had about four students that had moved in with zero English that had come from other countries. Certainly no excuse, but definitely a targeted group that we need to be able to help and support in different ways. Those students that moved in also were not Spanish speakers, they were Ukrainian speakers, so a completely different language that we needed to come up with some new EL supports for. So we will certainly consider to follow those students and target what we need to work on for them in second grade. And then looking at... Okay. I'm like, did I say too much? Okay, no, it's okay, you can do it. And then in second grade for early lit, we had significant growth here as well when we look at the 100% growth that we had for our students that were in this category. In the fall, we had zero students scoring in tier one, we had two in the spring. We went from five to one in tier two, and 19 to 11 in tier three. And then when we look at reading, 97% of our students showing us growth there, going from 40 to 52 tier one, 15 to 17 tier two, and 24 to eight in the spring. So even just looking at the comparisons fall to spring, in tier three alone, we had significant number of students move into the different tiers and into the different assessments. Same situation in second grade, about 100 students, so with 97 showing growth, there are three students that we are zoned in on and following extra careful as they move on to West Oak. And we have some handoff meetings to figure out how we can provide some more supports for those students as they move to the intermediate level. And then for the first time, this is the Spanish Language Arts scores. This is the first time that Diamond Lake did the three-benchmark cycle with the Spanish Language Arts. And we only did it for first and second grade, because we wanted to do this as a pilot and see what we could measure with this and how much growth our students would show. Kindergarten is, they cannot wait to do it next year, so they're excited to put this pilot out as well to see how much growth our students are making within their first year of learning Spanish. But straight across the board, whether they took English Language Arts or, I'm sorry, or the early lit, both grade levels, 100% growth across both of them. So when we look at first grade early lit for Spanish, we went from 17 to 12, 13 to four, and 10 to two. And that's because we had so many students move into the actual reading assessment. In tier one, going from one to 14, tier two, eight to five, tier three, 16 to three. And then if you look at second grade especially, the entire grade level within the dual program made the shift. So when we look at tier one early lit, we went from 34 to one, eight to zero, one to zero, to then completely shift to the reading test for second grade Spanish, four to 34 in tier one, zero to six in tier two, and zero to one in tier three. So we are incredibly proud of our dual-language teachers and their consistent efforts to show that 100% growth for both grade levels as well. And then when we look at first and second grade math, 100% growth in first grade, going from 68 to 79, 14 to nine, and 13 to five. And in second grade, going from 52 to 66 in tier one, 18 to 12 in tier two, and 23 to nine in tier three, with 98% growth. So as we have our handoff meetings and we start off with a brand-new math curriculum for next year, we're focusing on those two students who will be moving over to West Oak, who may need some extra support in math, who are not able to show that growth. We did make considerable notes, though, remembering that if the students did not make the growth, that did not always mean they regressed either. There were some students that had flatlined and sort of came up with the same score or same performance that they did previously. It was not that all of the students had regressed, but either way, we're going to be able to target those specific skills to help those students, so they can show the growth in the following school year. So what is this data telling us about our grade levels? Significant growth overall, kindergarten through second grade in ELA. Significant growth kindergarten through second grade for math. Significant growth first and second grade for SLA. And a lot of that came from differentiating the instruction to meet student needs. We worked our data into every single monthly meeting and looked at things in a completely different way, so that we were looking at our children from a different lens and able to really figure out what needed to be targeted. It was also very useful for kindergarten to now be part of the STAR testing cycle, because they were also able to shift their teachings and learnings a lot sooner. Intervention was able to happen a lot sooner, so it's preparing our students even more for first grade, as we were targeting those skills. What we're going to do to address our learning gaps, our intervention team has already examined end-of-the-year data. They did it about three days before we got out of school, and they will start services day two. We're giving them day one off. But day two, if intervention is needed, our intervention team is going to get started with that, so that we can really help kids from the beginning. Once we get through that next assessment cycle for the fall, if intervention services need to change, they certainly will. But we wanted to make sure that we could catch those students who may regress over the summer, being out of, out of school for such a significant amount of time, so that we could really help get their routine and practice back in place. Our team meeting structure with the academic focus and the support of the instructional coaches helped to introduce new tools and new strategies to each of our teams as well. We also had progress monitoring systems that allowed us to target skills right from the beginning of the school year and figure out where we were seeing the growth and we were not, so that we could again shift our instruction. Our data-driven decision-making is really what helped to shape our classroom. And then, of course, looking ahead at our new math curriculum that we will be introducing, we also built in an extra 15 minutes of math into our schedule, because the new program does require a 75-minute period that can, of course, be split up however we see fit for our kids. 75 minutes might be a little long consistently at the early childhood level, so we will have a 15-minute block and a 60-minute block of the math rotations. So that is Diamond Lake. With that, I will pass it on to West Oak.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Dr. Berger. All right, so as we are looking at our ELA scores for West Oak Intermediate School, you can see that in third grade, we continue the trend of moving our students from up to larger numbers in the spring, from tier one went to 35 to 40. Our tier two increased from 12 to 14, but again, you look at that, you look at our tier three, we dropped from 27 students to 16. So they got to go somewhere, so sometimes that tier two grows. We've talked about that, I think, in every, every presentation. But we noticed 88% of our students made positive growth for the year, and much to what Dr. Berger was talking about, what we do now is now we take a look at those kids specifically, that small number of students that did not make that growth. Okay, what specifically is there to look at? And that's kind of an easy target to, to hit, because it's such a small sample size that we can identify what some of those things are. Whether it's attendance, whether it's, you know, the interventions we were using. Same intervention doesn't work for every student, so how do we mix that up? Fourth grade, much the same success story, 49 to 54 in tier one, 12 down to nine in tier two, and 24 dropped to 15 with a 92% overall growth rate. Fifth grade, we went from 37 to 44 in tier one, dropped 18 to 16, and 25 to 22, showing an 86% growth rate for reading. Over to math. So math, we can see, we, we have some interesting numbers here in the, in the tier level. So in third grade, we actually went from 45 to 38 in tier one, 12 to 15 in tier two, and we stayed flat in tier three. But 100% of our kids made growth. I'm going to come back to that in just a second, because I can see the question marks above everybody's head. We'll get back to that in just a second. Let's get on to the celebration part. So in tier one for fourth grade, we went up 47 to 48, we went 19 to 21 in tier two, and then we dropped, you know, 50% almost, 20 to 11 in tier three, 97% of our kids made growth. And in fifth grade, 33 went up to 45, 17 down to 13, and 30 down to 22, 100% of our students made growth. Now, let's go back to third grade for a second. How can this be, if 100% of our kids made growth? Why are we flatlined in tier three, why did we drop in tier one? And the, the answer to that, while the solution is a little complicated, the answer is they're, they're making growth, but they're not keeping pace with peers. And that's what it is. So they're all making growth, but they're not closing the gap as fast as they should be. So we're going to look at why those reasons are with those kids and specifically target those areas. So we flip on to the next step slide. We addressed a lot of, so a large, large majority of our students are making growth in each grade. ELA tiers are moving in the right direction. Our current action steps that we've had in place for the entire year, they are working. Students are making growth in math, but not necessarily keeping pace with peers. So what are we going to do about that? We're going to increase instructional time in math. So not only are we, are we increasing it 15 minutes to make it a 75-minute block, as Dr. Berger explained, but we're actually increasing our instructional time in fifth grade by shifting the band and choir section to the end of the day. So we're actually recapturing about 45 minutes of instructional time in the day. All of our math classes will follow a guided math model, which will help us to ensure more differentiated instruction, more targeted instruction with small groups of students. We're going to implement a full-time math interventionist. Now, we had a math interventionist this year for the first time, but the way we split Mrs. Salazar's duties between advanced reading and then the math interventionist, it helped, but didn't quite work out, so we made a shift. We're going to go back to where Mrs. Salazar, she's still advanced reading full-time, but then advanced math. And then we were actually going to transition one of our EL resource teachers to be EL math resource. So full-time EL math intervention, and that, we believe, is going to allow us the capacity and the flexibility to help all the students that need to move in math, close those gaps. All right, as, and as I said earlier, identifying the trends of students not demonstrating growth to reexamine and revise instruction, it could be, it could be several things. One of them are things that we might not necessarily be able to control, but we can help. But other things are, what are, what types of interventions are we putting in place, whether it's math or reading? What's working, what's not? What tools do we have in our, in our toolbox that we can switch up and use with students to make them more successful? We're going to continue our reading instruction with the push-in model and co-teaching support that was new this year, and that made a lot of difference. So in the past, you may remember, whether our students were tier three or tier two, they were getting pulled out of the classroom. We've had all of our students in for tier one instruction. Any student that's in tier two, the, the intervention comes into the classroom, and only tier- And only tier three was getting pulled up, but it's not, it was not as much as it was before. So we're having our, all of our students together, learning from each other, and it's made a big difference. There are some of those students who need that extra, you know, specific support that requires to pull out. We'll continue with that a little bit. And then realizing those opportunities, specific supports for students not showing growth. We, we just really need to hone in, small number of students not showing growth. What specifically is it we can identify it easier and we'll get to work right away in the beginning of the school year? And with that, the middle school.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Preble. You know, first of all, our, our numbers are a little mo, a little bit more modest at the middle school level, and I'll kind of explain that a, a little bit more and, and kind of, you know, the opportunity and challenge that we have ahead of us that, that we're definitely looking forward to. You know, as Dr. Cunningham had already mentioned here, the first test of the year, you know, that fall, that fall star exam is more of a pre-test. That test remains about the same as we get into December, but then it changes a little bit in complexity as we move into the spring. So you know, we, you know, we own this, this data and there's a, a number of things that I'd like to celebrate on this, but it also gives us an opportunity to, to really, to really kind of button up and, and just kind of bear down here in regards to what we can do moving forward. So we, we're looking forward to that, that opportunity. So first of all, with, and I'll explain that a little bit more here as we, as we move forward. But um, you know, with our, our, our STAR ELA results, as you can see here, we gained, we gained a couple of kids at that tier one level with our sixth grade. However, the, the area that, that we definitely want to dive into with our content teams is, you know, what, what happened with our tier twos, you know, falling to that tier three level? This is kind of one of the, the, the bigger points that, that you, we are going to bring to our, our PLCs here for this coming fall. And it's something that, that we, we look forward to, to kind of exploring and, 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 and we have some ideas here on, on how we're going to implement that. And I'll tell you just a little bit here, in, in just a little bit. Seventh grade, which, which was an excellent celebration as we gained, you know, we gained eight, eight students into that tier one level. And that, that takes away from some of those kids that tier two and tier three, where we, whether those numbers went down, which is excellent. That's what we want to see. Eighth grade also, you know, we, we gained a couple of kids in our tier, our tier one level. But then kind of stagnated a little bit here with our tier two and tier threes that, that, you know, was losing a couple with that tier two level, but then also gaining two at that tier three with that seventy-six percent growth. Moving forward to that STAR math. As we can see here, a, you know, one of our, our biggest highlights is that, you know, with our sixth grade, ninety-five percent showed growth, which was, which was amazing to see. But, but also more importantly here, just seeing that, that number of kids move from that tier two and three levels to that tier one. We saw a very large, large jump with that with fifty-five to sixty-seven, so gain of eleven there, which is amazing. Tier two, we gained three kids, but those are also could, could be attributed to those, those three that we lost at the tier, the tier three level. Saw some, some great growth here with our seventh grades. We, we gained four, four kids into our tier one level. And then, you know, lost a couple from that tier two and, and lost one from that tier three level with seventy-eighth percent growth. Eighth grade stagnated here a little bit here with our fifty-four holding strong. But then also here, adding a couple to our tier two and tier three levels with that eighty percent growth as well. So if I, if I move forward here, I'm just kind of looking at our data. Can move to that next one. You know, overall, what we are seeing is, you know, we, we see that there is, the, the, the points here that are given are the, the overall averages as we we, we compare from the fall to the spring. So, you know, although we didn't see the percentages that we would like to have seen. Kids are making growth in all these areas. And when we incorporate the median student growth percentage, which, which basically indicates, you know, how are we keeping up with our nation, you know, our, our, our students from around the nation? We are actually closing the gap or progressing or learning faster at a faster rate in almost all areas. You know, as compared to our, our, our national, the national average here. So it's definitely some great things involved with that. Other items that we are exploring, like I said, here, we're going to own that data. And, you know, I think that's our opportunity to, to really kind of explore what we can do as, as instructors and, and teachers here, you know, for our kids. Is, you know, we are, we are, we are moving towards standards-based grading, which is going to lend right into, you know, a number of these skills that, that is being assessed. So that's going to be our, our work here for, for the majority of our school year next year. Also, we're looking to implement Marzano's high-yield instructional practices, which, which is going to definitely lead to, to increased, increased learning. But also, we're going to revamp our, our professional learning community, our PLC cycles to kind of lend towards giving, giving teachers these skills and having, you know, and having them really drill down into how, you know, how they can, how they can progress kids and, and improve learning as well. So a lot, a lot, a lot of great ideas coming up and a lot of fun things that we are gonna, we're gonna be implementing in addition to the things that we're already doing as we, we build in our schedule for this coming year. We're going to continue with our writer's workshop. You know, and with math here, we're going to continue with our pay, our, our regular pacing with our tier two and three, two, tier two and tier three reading as Dr. Cunningham has already mentioned, we're going to continue with our level literacy intervention curriculum. We're going to continue with our tier two and tier three math pullouts. And then, you know, our ELL students are going to have, going to continue with their designated groupings. As, as Dr. Olson is going to mention here in just a little bit, our STAR CBM. We, we've, we've seen some, some very positive growth with that. And then our cross-curricular work. And then just explore ways to continue engagement throughout the school year. So, you know, obviously during the springtime can be, you know, a little, you know, kids might be a little less on the, on, on the mode, a little, a little less motivated here, but you know, so how can we, you know, we as teachers explore ways to kind of keep them on board and, and keep them engaged and keep them learning here throughout the entire year?
All right. Before I kind of get into some of the tier one breakdown, if you, the board group, for those that remember from last year, we would do an SGP presentation and talk about how our kids are growing compared to their peers. And so the advantage of doing it this way, other than there's great growth to celebrate, is if we had used the SGP just to give the board an idea, all, all the grades are pretty similar across the district in it. We would have looked very, like we were all kind of very similar all the way through. In fact, some of the grades that maybe had less percentiles of student growing actually scored higher nationally in terms of peer comparison. By doing it this way, the schools got really into figuring out what subgroups are not making movement, like maybe we would have not in the past in terms of on a school-wide and district-wide scale. We look at like, how many are Yale learners, how many are IEP, how many are duly identified? How many are advanced that aren't growing? And you begin to think about where, where your programming is. And that's where some of the next steps come in. And also some of the things we'll talk about at the board retreat Thursday, but just great growth. Just a reminder to the board, there was a question about being able to see what the growth looks like in tier one, for those that are in the thirtieth to ninety-ninth percentile. So this is the fall to spring. I took the numbers off because it just gets a little bit smaller. You can see, we like to see the blue and the dark green get a little bit bigger. And if you see the bar graphs that are higher and lower, that just means a number of kids either in the grade. So it doesn't necessarily mean anything if you see some of them are, are lower down. It's just how many kids are here. So we circle first grade is a great example, but we like to see where you're seeing a push up into the higher tiers. That's always a great trend. We like to see in tier one. Just kept it on first grade because it was easier not to move the circle. Just worked out nicely for the slide copying to keep it there. So just to give you an idea of what we're looking at, again, we love to see blue and green. If you're in blue, you're considered ninety-ninth percent or ninetieth percentile above typically. And that's a really strong place to be, usually multiple grade levels ahead according to STAR. With that, I'll give it over to Dr. Olson. I'm going to give you the clicker.
Thank you very much. All right. So this year, the special education department decided to really look at how can we implement and do a really great job at doing a standardized curriculum-based measure and really look at that data collection. So we used at the beginning, the STAR curriculum-based measures that we had, and then we started seeing, oh, hey, maybe we need a little bit more information for our third through eighth grade programs for math. So we also introduced, it's called EZCBM, which is another curriculum-based measure to help us really start to see the growth of our students with IEPs. And well, how we did that is we actually had the case managers give these quick assessments that can be two to five minutes long. And go ahead and do these quick assessments on their IEP goals. So in ELA, in math, and then use that data to determine if that student is making progress towards their IEP goals. And we're excited to say that we are seeing a lot of good growth. We're seeing that overall at DLS, we're seeing a hundred percent of our students are growing. And what it's important to note here is these are students that have IEP goals in ELA, in English and Language Arts or Reading. We have students that have behavioral goals. We have students that have functional goals that they might not be included in this. But this is where our students are really starting with that ELA and showing the growth. And though it might be a little bit of growth, we are still seeing growth and it's something to be celebrated. And this is our first time of really capturing this and seeing it as a year-long progress. And it's been exciting to see the numbers increase from every few weeks to few weeks and really see that growth overall go. And when maybe we did have breaks, we were able to see, okay, a little bit of regression, but then they were able to go back, right back up after that core instruction from the special education teachers. So it's exciting to really see that overall, even in our third through fourth grade and fifth grade, we're seeing that hundred percent growth. And at the middle school, we're seeing that, you know, starting, there's going to be some more gaps that we have that we're looking at and working with Dr. Cunningham to really start to analyze, okay, what other supports do we need to put in place to start to support these students? And why are we starting to see these gaps in the growth here? And what does that look like? So these CBMs are providing us the opportunity to really look at the data differently and on a bi-weekly basis to examine and see how our students are performing. For math, we're continuing to see that growth over at DLS with a hundred percent growth. And for third through fifth grade, we're seeing a hundred percent growth. And then you'll notice that we don't have it yet for our math program for the middle school. We are working on that. And hopefully next year that will be fully implemented with the, with the use now of EZCBM. So overall, our data is really telling us that we're seeing growth. And it, which is really exciting to see. And we're seeing that that push-in time that we're, we have increased is really starting to support the students as well as that co-teaching time that we have is also supporting the needs of the students. What we want to do and what we are doing to look at that area of, of gaps of learning is continuing on with using that EZCBM. So that we can look at the full picture of the student kindergarten all the way through eighth grade as well as continue with having those data collection meetings with our teams and really looking and analyzing it and aligning our IEP goals with what we're seeing with the Common Core State Standards as well as our EZCBM curriculum-based measures. We also are looking at increasing minutes if a student is not making growth. We are looking at, looking at change of placements if a student is not meeting their needs. So really, it's one of those things that's allowing us to have a lot of great conversations that are very data-driven to ensure that our students are receiving the least restrictive environment and making growth. And it's exciting to see, and I'm excited to see next year for a whole year to really see how our students grow. And I'm going to turn it back over.
As has been the custom this year, is we like to have some bonus slides in the presentations. So the bonus slides, the spring is around math pathways and an update. So some of the things we did with analyzing our data is we looked at the way our math pathways were kind of set up back in the eighteen, nineteen school year. And we noticed that there were some things that really needed to be adjusted. So this portion is meant to be an update to the board to give you an idea of what some of those pathways look like. So this is the current, these are, these are the conditions that precipitated making a change. We have two levels of math, grades three through five, and then we have three levels of math in grade six through eight. The West Oak Intermediate and Mr. Preble alluded to some of this, advanced math teaching was, has been taught by the mat, the classroom teacher in grades three through four, and it's a separate class in fifth grade. Students, when they come to middle school, are skipping one to two grades when moving from fifth grade to sixth grade. What I mean by that is levels. They're skipping years of math. This approach has yielded mixed results at the middle school as we looked over our data for the last few years. For those students that are successful versus those that are not, we took a look at some of their percentiles that helped inform some of what we'll talk about in a moment. Also, the new math curriculum is much more rigorous than previous math curricula that we have used. And also there'll be fidelity K through eight because there was not fidelity in the way that it should be and can be. So that work, we know that that piece is coming as well. So this is what it currently looks like. This is how we do things. So we use the first to seventy-ninth percentile for students to move into the, follow the grade level pathway. And I apologize, I don't have a, a laser pointer on this, but I'm, I'm looking across the top right now. So the third grade, if you're in third grade, you take third grade math, fourth grade math, fifth grade math. And then if you are between the fifth, first and fifty-ninth percentile in middle school, you took what was called math one, math two, and then pre-algebra. Students that were in the sixty to seventy-ninth were skipped a grade and put into math two, which is the seventh grade math, then pre-algebra, then algebra. So, and then I have another line there, a little kind of a curved line that is sneaking us down to the second path, the second path, which the second path, if you are identified starting in second grade, going into third grade with a percentile in the eightieth to ninety-ninth percentile in math, you are placed into fourth grade math and third grade. That's an accelerated curriculum to get you into fourth grade. And then in fourth grade, you take fifth grade math. Fifth grade, I wrote sixth grade math instead of math one, just to kind of keep it, to emphasize the change. And then in sixth grade, you take pre-algebra, seventh grade algebra, and in eighth grade, you finish with geometry. Also, we have that curved path, or if you were in fifth grade math, you were taking the, the general ed pathway, but you tested the last two out of your three tests and the eightieth percentile or above, you were offered to go down to pre-algebra. So you would be skipping two grades to do that. Which has had mixed results for some of our students, quite honestly. And so we've had some, some good conversations around that. And so some of the changes with twenty-three, twenty-four is we are not going to skip any more grade levels from grades five through six unless you're in the ninetieth percentile or above. When going into sixth grade, and I'll show you in a graph, or a JENET teacher recommends a student for the accelerated track, so you could go into that second path. The new minimum percentile needed for accelerated math in ELA in third to fifth grade has been changed. The percentiles were updated to reflect the STAR test. The last testing percentiles that were used were not tied to STAR, which they use seventy-fifth and ninetieth. And then advanced ELA, so ELA really is a part of this as well. They're using the same percentiles now. We're going to go seventy-fifth for into third grade. For middle school, we'll make that change probably next year. We just need more time to analyze that data. We are not comfortable with making that change yet. Advanced ELA and advanced math are taught in separate classes in grades three through five next year. So that's one of our adjustments, especially as we use standards base, and it's harder for some of our students to access the, the, we'll call it the level four, your enriched growth by making sure that we can have a little more dedicated instruction, we're able to really advance even the grade level. And then like Mr. Preble mentioned, we recognized there was a gap structurally at the intermediate school. That's how things, staff was allocated. And so the EL math interventionist becomes an integral role supporting our students that need support in the JENET. So this is what the pathway looks like now. It's now the first to seventy-fourth instead of seventy-ninth. Takes third, fourth, fifth, and I've changed the name to sixth math, seventh math, because that's what it's called in Envision, and then pre-algebra in eighth grade. Then we have, as you can see, there's a big X through. We've gotten rid of that sixty to seventy-ninth change. The second path is seventy-fifth to ninety-ninth using STAR. Those students will go into fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, and then there's a couple of options here. Most students will just continue along in that, or sorry, students that are seventy-fifth to eighty-nine will continue along and they'll take seventh grade, pre-algebra, algebra. Students that are scoring on STAR in the ninetieth percentile, which is the STAR measure of considered to be the advanced level, typically STAR places you multiple grade levels ahead. Those students will go into the pre-algebra, algebra, geometry track as opposed to everyone eightieth and above taking that. Looking at our numbers for fifth grade, that cut line looked really clean, and it would be students that would be recommended for that anyway. Just to give some more background, students are, the scores are kind of the, the indoor to the, are the, that's your inroad, that's your initial qualification piece. You want to see two of the last three tests in that range before we make that recommendation. And we really try to do it after the spring test. So we have the full year picture to get an idea of what, who we would recommend. And then we have these gifted characteristics that we use that are not made up by us, they're norm referenced that teachers can also use for recommendation. There's another little squiggle path there that at any point in third, fourth, and fifth grade, teachers can make a recommendation based on scores and other observations that students could move into the other track. That just includes fifth grade as well. Our plan, though, is we would not be jumping kids from fifth grade all the way down to pre-algebra and sixth grade. We would only be jumping them from fifth grade to the seventh grade. We wouldn't do the two-grade level skip. There's always individualized circumstances that we can operate within, but as a norm, we would not be following that. So as this is a change, and we want to make sure the board is informed with it because it does have to do with our math placement and supports moving forward. So with that, I already kind of mentioned some of the reflection. This has been a really powerful year for our use of data as a practice and has allowed for us to make some really informed decisions about what structurally, what structurally needs to be addressed and also instructionally in the classroom, what we can focus on more. And that's been really positive from our learning associates through administration, knowing exactly. And that's been really positive from our learning associates through administration, knowing exactly, um, where gaps are in tracking and working with students for growth goals. There's a lot of, there's been a lot of excitement around it and we're excited for our next year. Um, but just a reminder, some of the things that we had going in place this year, our after-school program of math and reading support, um, continued. Um, funded through ESA, and then we also have been developing our standard-based report cards for K-five this year, they're all ready to go. Be completely standards-based K through five next year in all subject areas. And that includes, um, in dual, includes in specials, middle school be writing their standard-based report cards, they're already actually making a lot of progress with that. And they'll be ready to go for the following year as well. I mean, we're talking through what that really does for your instruction feedback, teachers having a lot of good conversations about how much feedback they give kids to really give, um. Feedback to students and to families more in real time. We also adopted that LLI for K-five and six, eight. And we also selected a new writing and math curriculum, teachers are spending their summer hours working on both of those to implement them and update their report cards to reflect it. Um, we've had our coaching presentation, and you can see some of the things that are listed, they have been focused on as well. Been hugely important, and then we've continued to use EduClimber more robustly. You saw some of those graphs we showed you were from EduClimber. Um, and, uh, PLCs have, have multiple weeks each month where they're using their data to help make pro, decisions about changing instruction in real time and placing students. Um, and then of course that continues with that CVM progress monitoring, uh, MTS manual we have just developed this year. It'll be, um, I, I'm tasked with putting together, putting the rest of the pieces together for the summer. But that informs, um, each of the schools, our decision rules for moving kids in and out of tiers very specifically and what skills they're learning. And then we also implemented the DESA and student SEL screeners and surveys. Um, because student mental health and wellness is extremely important. Um, and if we don't take care of that, it's hard to focus on academics. So with that, questions please.
Um, I have two questions about the last slides that you showed. If a fifth grader is taking sixth grade math, does that mean? The fifth grader is going into a sixth grade classroom with sixth graders or the curriculum is? Instructed, I'm sorry, the teacher is instructing with the sixth grade curriculum, but they're all fifth graders?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure if they're integrated with other grade levels.
Yeah, Ms. Salazar will teach them, Mr. Preble, I apologize, I'm taking it. Uh, Ms. Salazar teaches it, and she uses the sixth grade curriculum for it. So she'll teach that for fifth, at the middle school level, what we have tried, uh, last year and this year is because, um, it really creates a. A giant class sizes for gen ed because we don't, um, accelerate the curriculum per se. Uh, we were able to do multi-grade combinations, so some students that might, if you're six, accelerate, depending on the numbers. Maybe with a seventh gen ed class, so we've done it at the middle school because otherwise if we don't do that, the three gen ed offerings. For the middle school teacher ends up being in the high twenties, uh, while the gifted section, well, uh, the advanced section might be eight. And so that was really creating a discrepancy, so we decided to, to make that decision to roll up.
And my, a follow-up, do students ever as they get to eighth grade or maybe even seventh, go to Mundaline High School or Stevenson for classes?
They sure do, uh, it, it is, it's technically not on, I didn't know if anyone was going to ask about that, it's not on it. Cause it's, it's extremely individualized. So these are students that are showing a, um, I, I'll call it almost an extracurricular interest in mathematics. Where their ability, their scoring consistently in that, not only the ninety-ninth, but their ability to articulate skills that are two grade levels ahead are already there. And so right now, for example, we have one student that will in eighth grade go to Stevenson and take, um, algebra two. Uh, over at Stevenson High School. So we have one that will have that option to do that. It, it's, we, that student is doing so well, we asked Stevenson if they can do it in seventh grade and they said, no. Um, we can't get them that far ahead, but we give it, we give it a little crack, see what they would say. But, so we do, it's extremely individualized. So all the things that we have here, Mr. Preble is working on a draft communication, we're working together on that. Of just so families know what's happening with any changes and, well, along with Ms. Salazar. But it, it's not on here because if I say ninety-ninth and you go, oh, I scored in the ninety-ninth. You are well supported going into geometry, we're talking about something that's really beyond even the scale of what this is, if that makes sense.
So a student, let's say going in eighth grade could be in geometry, but is they're being instructed here or at West Oak?
Yeah.
With other, maybe seventh or eighth graders who are also like that.
Yeah, all, all geometry is, is eighth grade, so it's all eighth grade. Uh, there are, there are all kinds of ideas out there about accelerating math and algebra for all these different things. And so we have a lot of different pathways where things could, could go one way or another. But right now, this seems to be a very good fit for our student body and offers a lot of options for our students.
And I have just one last question, sorry.
No, don't.
I'd be, I'm interested like the tier three, like kindergarten through eighth grade, tier three move-in kids. Cause I assume if they're not English-speaking, they get to, they're in tier three right away, I would assume. And I would wonder just if you could, if there would be a way to evaluate a year later, where are they? Like how well did they, how quickly they learned English? And how quickly they moved out of tier three to tier two or even one, just as a really special group, unique group. It's probably a very small group at each grade level, but just kind of interesting.
Yeah, we certainly can, I don't know if anyone wants to speak to how they're supporting, um, some of our newcomers.
Sure, I can just say, especially at the early childhood level, there are children that will come to us, not one single word of English. It only takes about three to four weeks and all of a sudden they're saying, hey, want to play, let's go to the bathroom. You know, the, the conversational language is getting there really quickly because they are with their peers all day long, every class that they go to. The part that becomes a little bit more difficult, of course, is the academic language. Because so much of what we teach and what the English language requires, in many cases doesn't make sense. Because it's so complex in comparison to other languages. Um, a lot of what we're seeing with the growth, again, at the early childhood level. They may come and try to take the assessment, they can't answer a single question. The next thing you know, they're answering maybe ten or fifteen of the thirty questions. So it's considerable growth for that student who came not able to answer, answer, excuse me, a single question. Is it always mastery of skills? Not always, and that's the stuff that we target with our intervention team, so that while they're also learning the language, they're learning how to master the skill. Because they might be able to repeat some of the words to you, or they might be able to have a conversation with you about it, but they might not have full mastery of the skill yet. Uh, we also have our EL teacher that pushes in a lot and helps and supports while children are there in the classroom. So they are always seeing and hearing what's going on with some extended English language learner support.
I have one, um, question for Dr. Olson, I know you have been working with using the easy CVM. And that sounds great, just fast, low-pressure measures. Given that as a leadership team, you guys are identifying students in tier two and tier three who obviously are not, don't have IEPs. Is this something that could be moved into, um, the regular class, uh, regular ed classroom? I mean, is that something that could be a piece that once you guys feel comfortable? You know, those short snippets with very specific targeted measure, you know, measures? Is that something that you're looking to, you know, transition to the, across the gen ed curriculum? As just a question.
Yeah, I, you know, we've learned a lot about the different curriculum-based measures, and I've shared a lot with Dr. Cunningham. And we've had the different discussions as well as with Dr. Berger of how to use the STAR. So it's been one that we've talked about, I think it would have to be more of a team discussion further on down the road to say, okay, now we're comfortable. Now here, here's the information and here's how we've done it and it, this is successful. But yes, yeah, I have had a lot of conversations about that and how to use it so that it can be a more universal tool.
I have a couple of questions, um, I noticed that in some of the grades, the number, the total number of students is not the same. So like if I look at eighth grade math, in the spring, there's more kids. So if you're looking at the percentage of students that grew, how are you me, how are you measuring the additional students? I'm assuming that those are either four kids that didn't take the test in the fall or four new students. Sure.
Um, you know, likewise, if they took it in December, um, you know, did they grow between December and, and May? And if they did, great, you know, we, you know, we added if they didn't, you know, that, that counted against it. But yeah, it was, it's something that, you know, as long as we had two scores to compare them between, um, that's, that's what we, that's what we measured it by.
Okay, thank you, um, and then I had two more questions. I wondered if, and I'm sure this answer varies, but, um, if as you're looking at the students that didn't make growth. Have you seen any common reasons why? Or are you seeing unique reasons? And by common reasons, I mean, maybe all of those students didn't have one particular skill. Like, are we seeing any of that or are we just seeing, you know, it's totally individualized?
Yeah, and you know, when we, like I said here, with, with, uh, with our progress, you know, it seems like our, our, our tier one kids, you know, grew quite a bit. And that really pulled up our, 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 our student, uh, you know, student percentages. Um, you know, really what it looks as though is that, you know, that tier three level kind of, kind of stayed there.
Sure.
Um, and really didn't, we didn't really see a lot of, a lot of growth there. So what we're looking at is, you know, how, how can we revamp, you know, what we're doing here at that tier three level? Um, to, to really start kind of pinning down some of those skills that are needed. You know, like, like you said here, Ms. Bayless, you know, maybe we start incorporating, you know, C, you know, easy CBMs with that. Uh, but also here what we can do specifically, just in, just instructionally, uh, within those classes to help, uh, to help improve those skills as well. Uh, I know level literacy, you know, that, that curriculum had, has really shown us some great, some great results. Our teachers know it very, very well, this is only our second year of implementation of that. And, um, you know, kids have, have really been engaged, uh, it is, it is invasive, they are, they are on from, from bell to bell. And, and they're showing a lot of growth, even though they may not be, um, showing it, showing it with that one test, you know, during that one place in time.
Sure, and then, um, my last question is, do you think that with summer school, we'll be able to provide any additional support? Not to make growth, but maybe to prevent kind of any of the slide.
If I, if I could, before you take the mic, um, what, what was, what was exciting, what was interesting from last year, sorry. But, um, you know, from, from last year during this time to when we came back in the fall. A, a, actually, kids scored higher during, uh, during that, when we, during, during spring compared to fall, which is about the opposite of that summer slide than what we were to expect. But I, um, so I'm going to, saying that here, I'm going to turn the microphone over to, to Preble.
Sure.
Yes.
Uh, so, um, one of the things that we have, uh, that we have put in place for summer school this year. Is that we have shared the data of, I mean, we've shared the data before of students, we've given teachers that are teaching summer school access to data, but we sent out specific data. Uh, some of it comes from our Star Renaissance, um, where there's, uh, there's a report called, uh, Mastery Report. And it shows all the different skills, you can either look at it through standards or you can look at it through skills. And sometimes for like, um, I, this is my own personal feeling, but I, my, my team agrees with me on this. Is that sometimes when you're looking for a quick, um, you know, adjustment for something, looking at the skills instead of the overall standard. So we're able to look at that and we can say, okay, in reading, we're looking at, we're going to focus on these three skills, the math, we're going to focus on these three skills, and that's where we're going to hit. And then if time permits, we'll go on from there, but we have kind of a, a prescribed set for these students that we're going to try doing and see if that, that works out. Plus we have, um, more aligned, you know, materials, as you're, the FMP suite is all there, ready to go. And, uh, we're going to continue using, uh, MyMath and the differentiated pieces to MyMath. We're not switching over to Envisions for the summer yet, just because we haven't had the time on task to really learn that program. But we think we have a great plan in place that's going to help these students grow.
That's fantastic.
And I'm talking grow, not just, you know.
Well, that's, I mean, that's great, I think that's what we'd love to see, you know, possible. And I just also wanted to say thank you, um, you know, the board, I think for a lot of years has asked for more data and more kind of information. And really over the last year, we've seen more and more of that, and we've seen more of all of you using the data, um, with your staffs. We've seen the teachers really digging in, and I think that we're seeing the results of that. Um, and it's exciting to see, I mean, when we had that presentation, at our last board meeting, we saw the pre-K through second graders reading. Their reading was outstanding, I mean, it was phenomenal. So it's really exciting to see, we really appreciate all your hard work, thank you so much for, you know, presenting all this additional data to us. Does anyone else have any questions?
Yes, thank you District Leadership Team, and our third and final presentation of the evening is going to be recognition of our parent-teacher organization.
You know, it's so nice to see, our first presentation was, um, of students being recognized for their growth for academic achievement. So we, it was full of their parents or their families who were supporting the kids. So I love to see the kids here who are here to support their parents. Um, who've done amazing things and helped you all grow and learn and thrive in District Seventy-Six. So, um, on behalf of the District Leadership Team and the Board of Education, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize our very supportive, thoughtful, and gracious PTO leaders. District Seventy-Six would not sparkle as much as it does without your generous support, your gifts of time and your positive spirit. You have made many of our events and things possible for students and staff because of your generosity, your passion and your commitment. To make District Seventy-Six an inclusive place where all students can excel. Many of our students and families have access to gifts and events because of your commitment and passion for service and equality. You each came together after the pandemic and stepped up to revitalize the parent-teacher organization when they needed new leadership and helped to engage more students and families. We all appreciate the dine-outs, the generous scholarships, the often spiritware, the awesome spiritware. And the special indulgences we all experienced during Staff Appreciation Week. These are just a few of the many things and events that you all take ownership of and execute with heart, soul, and love. We know how busy you all are and the fact that you each volunteer your time away from your own families to support. Other children and families is recognized, very much noticed and honorable. So on behalf of the Board of Education, the District Leadership Team, the District Seventy-Six staff and all of our students, we thank you. Nisha, Sarah, Stephanie and Tressa for all that you have done and continue to do to lead your legacies in District Seventy-Six. Our schools and our districts are better places because of your leadership, your support and your sparkle. And with that, we'd like to give you, um, our gifts of some of our favorite things, red roses, chocolate and wine. So if you would each come up, we'd like to thank you.
Yes, there you go.
And that concludes our presentations for the evening.
Okay, moving on to our business agenda, and we have a long business agenda tonight. Um, the first item is just the omnibus vote agenda and that is up for review. Our second item is a personnel item and that is up for action this evening. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have two resignations and we have three new hires. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Hey, that motion is approved, and moving on to our next item, which is approving the lawn and grounds maintenance bid. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the three-year contract with Apex Landscaping as the lawn and grounds contractor. For the twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four, through twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-six school years at a total cost of thirty-four thousand dollars, thirty-four thousand seven hundred and forty dollars per year. May I have a motion to approve, please? It's like scanning up and down for me.
We do have tech assistance here.
Eric's getting nervous that we're not going to approve the lawn bed. He's like, I'm going to have to go mow the lawn. Yes. I was like, are we missing something? Um, yes. That motion is approved.
At least if you want Hiram to do it, it's easier.
Okay. And the next item is approving the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four healthcare rates. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy Six Board of Education accepts and approves the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four healthcare rates as listed in the table below for the plan year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. That motion is approved. And moving on to approving the appointment of treasurer. Whereas the school code instructs the trustees of schools to appoint a treasurer who shall be the custodian of school funds and responsible for all receipts, disbursements and investments of school, of the school funds and pays orders issued by the school board. And whereas Mr. Eric Rogers will assume the position of Director of Finance and Operation on July first, twenty twenty-three and possesses the qualifications set forth in section five dash one B of the school code. Therefore, be it resolved that the Diamond Lake School District Board of Education appoints Mr. Eric Rogers to serve as the treasurer for Diamond Lake School District Seventy Six for a one-year period beginning on July first, twenty twenty-three for the annual compensation of three thousand dollars. May I have a motion to approve, please? That motion is approved. The next item up for action is approving classified staff salary raises. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy Six Board of Education accepts and approves the classified staff salary raises as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. That item is approved. And the next three items are for review. The next item is a resolution to designate interest earnings for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Eric, did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, just because it's a new one. So as we're evaluating our year end financial situation, one method that I've not used yet is to designate interest. We transferred among our different funds. So for instance, if we had excess revenue in our education fund, we want to earmark that for future construction projects. This allows us that mechanism to do so. So it's an annual process that some districts utilize. We haven't done so already. And this also doesn't indicate if we're going to or not, just allows us the authority before June thirtieth.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. And the next item for review is the Diamond Lake School and West Oak Middle School door and hardware replacement. I think we've seen information on that, but.
You have, the only thing that's a little unique about this is we haven't, it's up for review. We haven't had final numbers yet.
Okay.
So as the mental said, we're going to get numbers tomorrow. I'll provide the email to you guys just so you know the exact bid. And then if acceptable, we'll bring it for action on the June twentieth meeting.
Okay. And then the last item, these are all yours, Eric, is the food service renewal.
And this is just an annual process that we now have to do. I was under the, we, we were under the IGA with Northbrook at first, there was an ongoing since we had a one-year agreement with District Seventy Five Chartwell. We wanted to do this on an annual basis as the numbers change. So every year we'll just approve a new agreement.
Okay. And that, that's keeping the same food service provider?
I apologize. We went out to bid and now we have Arbor Management is our food service company. So it is a new change in provider. Operations will run really similar. I'll provide a bunch of literature as far as the company, what they are and what the meals expected to be. So.
Okay.
A lot of good offerings.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Okay, moving on to board discussion. Do we have any items for board discussion this evening? No. Okay. Freedom of information request, we had one, it was fulfilled. Notices and communications. We have the seed all newsletter and then we also have an awful lot of fun District Seventy Six highlights. I don't know if there's anything you'd want to pick out in particular.
No, all of it is just so amazing. So if you have some time this week to watch the wonderful videos that Dr. Berger and her amazing staff and cast of characters have put together, it's really quite cute. So please take a look at that. And then we have our two moment of the month for May was Mrs. Hoffman and her retirement as well as her birthday celebration. And then we have June moment of the month is one of our eighth graders who was graduating and received the director's choir award. Steve Noldy with that cute little baby and her gold bow and our May Diamond Edge. So lots to celebrate.
Fantastic. Moving on, we now open the floor for public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. As we've lost our audience, I do not believe we have any public comments or petitions. Okay, then moving on to others, just a couple of date reminders.
Yes. So on June eighth, which is this upcoming Thursday, Mrs. Sullivan and Mrs. Hale and I will be attending the MHS theater meetings. And that's for District Seventy Nine Fremont, District Seventy Five Mundeline and District Seventy Three Hawthorne will be getting together with District One Twenty and kind of just sharing the highlights of our year, what we focused on and what we look forward to kind of continuing to grow and focus on next year. Mrs. Hale is going to report out on that. And then that same day, it's going to be a long day for us, but that same day, we have our Board Educational Retreat right here. So the first part of the presentation will be, or the first part of the meeting will be a presentation from our district leadership team. Giving you an update on the goals and priorities and where we are in each of those areas. You heard the student broken assessment piece today. So we'll just kind of highlight that on Thursday. And then the second part of the meeting will be with our boards of attorney. Sarah Bojack will kind of go over some guiding principles and practices for successful for governance. And then if you are interested in attending the triple I conference, Chicago this year, the dates are November seventeenth. Please just email Hiram by the end, by June thirtieth, so that we can go ahead and register you and get you on the list for.
Fantastic. Okay. Now we will move into executive session for the appointments, employment, or yes, employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session, please? Okay, thank you, everyone.